All right, Madam Clerk, we are ready to start. You want to go with roll call?
I have to read the letter first.
All right, ma'am.
On November the 14th, 2025, Laura Johnson, Clerk of Council, New Orleans City Council, 1300 Perdito Street, New Orleans, Louisiana, 70112. Dear Madam Clerk, Pursuant to my authority in Section 3-1075 of the Home Rule Charter of the City of New Orleans, there will be a special city council meeting on Wednesday, December the 10th, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. The meeting will be limited to the discussion and consideration of matters relative to the current financial condition of the city, included without limitation the status of the general fund and any changes to expect revenue or funding in Ordinance Number 30,522 and any other matters that may properly come before the council. Please make the necessary arrangements to have these special meetings cable cast live on government access television channel and tape for recasting in the future. Sincerely, J.P. Morell, President, New Orleans City Council. Roll call, Councilmember Morell, Councilmember Moreno.
President.
Councilmember Jeruso, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember King, Councilmember Green, Councilmember Thomas. We have six members. We have a quorum.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. I have a note here that I need to suspend the rules to start the 12:18 meeting at 9:00 a.m. to accommodate Military Day. I'll move to suspend. Seconded by Councilmember Green. Okay, I think it's, there we go. Six yays, no nays. All right, Adam, do I then take up a different date, or is that pretty much it?
We're all set there.
Okay, thank you, Adam. All right, now with that, we can commence our agenda. Up first is, I think Abby, I think you're, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Sorry, I'm filling in real quick. So first, let me, let me kind of go through the, the rules for public comment. The council usually allows 30 minutes of public comment per item under Rule 47. These weekly special meetings are extremely time sensitive and are focused on the narrow issue of approving payroll funding. If the business of the council is not completed by 10:00 a.m., city employees will not be paid timely. Given this, we will limit public comment to each item to 10 minutes total and will retain the limit of two minutes per speaker in Rule 47. A reminder that per Rule 45, all public comments must be germane to the agenda item being addressed, and this rule will be enforced. All right, now with that, Abby, Brandy, if you all want to come up along with the Legislative Auditor Team for the Expenditure Report.
Councilmember, we first have to suspend the rules to receive the Legislative Auditor's report.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Councilmember King has moved to suspend the rules, seconded by Councilmember Jeruso. All in favor? Aye.
And now we need to further suspend the rules to add it to our agenda.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll move to suspend. Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilmember King, all in favor? Aye. Six yays, no nays. Good morning.
Good morning. Mike Waguespack, Louisiana Legislative Auditor. In accordance with the State Bond Commission Terms and Conditions for the approval of the $125 million revenue anticipation note, we have, we have reviewed this week's payroll request and drawdown. And so as of 12:10, 2025, our preliminary review indicates the city's requests totaling $13, 786, 533, which is made up of 6.5 million to the Chase payroll card account and 7.2 million to reimburse the city's general fund account as outlined below. And, and below, we note that $6.53997 is payable to the Chase payroll funding account for the purpose of funding compensation and related employee and employer taxes for the pay period ending 12/6/2025. And you'll see that in Exhibit A. The second bullet is we have $2.259066 payable to the general fund account to reimburse the general fund for the fringe benefits, including but not limited to health insurance, pension contributions, garnishments, et cetera, for the prior pay period ending 11/29/2025. That's noted in Exhibit B. The last bullet is $4.988369 payable to the city's general fund account for the Chase, Chase account to reimburse the general fund for monthly payments to New Orleans Firefighters' Pension and Relief Fund and Municipal Police Employees Retirement System. That is noted in Exhibit B. And then furthermore, at the very last attachment, you'll note that we were tracking the balance of the, you know, the $125 million that was deposited into the special account. As we sit here today, after these transfers are approved, the balance will be $78,130, roughly $78 million. So that's what's left to fund future payrolls, which, you know, should cover January, and so anticipation that tax bills are going out, the revenues start coming in from the beginning of the year, we should be good. I'll note that overtime was less than projected, so that's positive. And just here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Waguespack. First of all, I've kind of watched this process without saying too much, inputting a lot during the budget process, and haven't had a chance to thank you for entering into this relationship. You know, people view the city of New Orleans and the state many times, not in the best light, but you and your team have been ready to stand by and help us during this crisis. But what people have asked me, I spoke to a group at university last night, we've heard from you in terms of accountability, the money, what you see. But when you talk about this relationship, if you could, for the public, say, what are the terms of this relationship? And it's, it's a, it's a relationship out of need right now that we hope ends at some point. So in your own words, if, if you could talk to the people who've asked me those questions, what is it, this relationship, and what makes it end?
Well, I think, I think the primary mission is to provide some oversight, you know, to, to, as kind of a condition for the, for the bond issuance of the $125 million. But as, as we're doing that, we're also kind of playing a trusted advisor role. So we're really, you know, in advisory capacity, trying to, you know, find the efficiencies, find the savings, and, and find the additional revenue, collection of revenues, et cetera, as we move forward to try to solve this, this, this budget problem. You know, we're also going to play an investigative role to look, determine how do we get here? And, you know, where was the overspend? What was the primary driver of that? Where did we fall out of compliance? So that's, it's kind of a, it's a, it's a multifaceted role, and I think that, you know, once, at one point, you know, once this, this loan is paid back, I think we're, we're sort of, you know, taking more of a backseat and playing more of an oversight as far as the, what we normally do as, as auditors, we're the depository of your audit. We oversee, we approve your audit engagement with your external auditors. And so we'll, but we'll still advise and be in, in advisory capacity as needed, as requested by the council or the mayor.
Yeah, I mean, you actually hit on what I was hoping, especially as an, as an advisor role. I mean, in basic accounting, I'm not an accountant, but you know, if one plus one doesn't give you two, then you have a problem. And if your, your projected revenue doesn't meet, your expenditures are what you need, you don't, you don't have to be as brilliant as you guys are with money to understand that, that, that's not going to work out. Or if you over-project and under-receive, then that's another problem, too. Not to get you involved in some of the political soap opera mess around here. I had done a letter to the former CAO, asking him just to come to explain, because you talked about advise and investigate. It would be good to know how we got here, what were some of the oversights, things that were missed, where were maybe some people kind of complicit, or maybe was, was their counting wrong so that this doesn't happen again? And, and you know, being the great CPA counting mind that you are, it's got to add up, right? Do you think it would be helpful if we had heard from the former CAO, or if this council had subpoenaed the former CAO? And we've been, this has been an aggressive council, like demanding and getting people and threatening to subpoena people. Would, do you think it would be helpful to at least hear his side of the story so that while you're advising and investigating and recommending to the people who are going to be here, just to make sure that this doesn't happen to this magnitude again?
I, I think it would be very, very helpful. I, I think what this council has not received is good timely information. I think you need monthly financial reports. You need to basically see what your spend is monthly and compare that to what was budgeted. And, and the budget has to be amended timely, anytime you have variances. I don't think this budget has had a history of being amended. I'm not sure that it's amended yet this year. So, you know, that, that means that we're not just paying attention to the budget. We're paying, we're paying attention what's into the checkbook, and that's not a good thing.
Yeah.
And that's how we, that's how we ended up here.
So you agree that that piece of the missing puzzle could be helpful and would be helpful?
It would be very helpful.
If we had that testimony or that information.
I would agree with that. Yes, sir.
Thank you for everything that you've done. I appreciate it.
All right, all right, this time I will move, we take a vote number five.
We have Resolution R. 25610 by Councilmember Jeruso, by request, approving and ratifying the release of $7,247,435.64 from the City of New Orleans Employee Emergency Payroll Fund to cover the payment of the fringe benefits and other payroll-related expenses for the payroll period beginning November 16th, 2025, and ending November 29th, 2025. The foregoing authorization shall be subject to concurrence by the Louisiana Legislative Auditor in accordance with City Code 70-415.347.
You all looking at me? All right, so we're going to take up the substitute resolution.
On this one, we have a substitute for 11, not for...
No, there should be a substitute for 10.
No, what they did was they put the information.
They got it, they got it on there.
10 has the numbers.
Great.
Is not need a substitute.
Great, okay. All right, Mr. Burnside, you're up, and we're taking up item number five. For people who are watching, we will come back to item number four.
Mike O'Reilly, Burnside, 2215, Felicity. So I appreciate the previous comments by Councilperson Thomas and the Legislative Auditor. I had already written down the word Gilbert on top of my paper and the word Jonathan Rhodes. So obviously, the council can do whatever the council wishes to do. In regards to the numbers that we have here with Resolution 25610, I'm somewhat concerned because at the top, it says something about $19 million. And then if we add the two numbers, the $6,600,000 and the $7,200,000, we only get like $13,800, which doesn't come anywhere near $19 million. So who really knows what's going on? But if we have 2,000 employees and we do some division, because we've got basically 1,300 for the police and maybe 700 on a good day for the fire, we end up with like 9,800 per employee inclusive of both salary and fringe, if we take the $19 million seriously, which I don't. And if we take the $13,800 seriously and do the division, we get 6,900 per employee for salary and fringe, which unfortunately I do take seriously. Because we find that on Exhibit B of the Legislative Auditor's effort to make things clear for us, we're going to give $3,900,000 to some retirees of the fire, which would be fine, maybe kind of if we were rich, but seeing that we've cut the City Planning Commission from $2 million to $1.5 million, it seems an odd thing to give retirees more money in a month than we give our City Planning Commission in a year, given the work they did for us all last night. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I've moved on R. 25610, seconded by Councilmember Green. All members vote yea, 7-0.
We're now coming to Resolution R. 25611. This resolution will be withdrawn.
Subordinate.
We have substitute Resolution R. 25611, our Councilmember Jeruso, approving and ratifying the release of $6,539,97.91 from the City of New Orleans Employee Emergency Payroll Fund to cover the cost of payroll-related expenses for city employees other than police and fire departments. For the payroll period beginning November 23rd, 2025, and ending December 6th, 2025, the foregoing authorization shall be subject to concurrence by the Legislative Auditor in accordance with City Code 70-415.347. We need to suspend the rules to receive this resolution.
So move, seconded by Councilmember Harris. Please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Seven yays, no nays. Motion to add it to the agenda.
No, this was, I'm sorry.
We don't have, because it's already on the agenda, we don't have to do that.
You about to add it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, you taught me well. I move to add it to the agenda, seconded by Councilmember Harris. All in favor? Aye. Seven yays, no nays. Now, on 25611, as substituted, Mr. Burnside, public comment.
Mike O'Reilly, Burnside, 2215, Felicity. As mentioned previously, the fire, police come out to like 6,900 each. Turns out the other city employees come out to 2,180 each on a bi-weekly combination of salary and fringe benefits, which is what it is. Police and fire are costing us three times what everybody else is costing us. What may be of some note is that the airport also put out bonds, and we put out a rand note, and the comparison between the two is somewhat stark. The airport got charged $18 in fees and for putting out $1,000 in bonds, we got charged $6 for every $1,000 in bonds we put out. Would sound like a good deal, except the airport put out a list of 14 different people who are receiving the money, and so far, I'm only in possession of two numbers, one of which claims to be a purchaser fee and the other is the cost of issuance, and not the names of anybody who got any actual money. I was in attempt to discuss this with the current Chair of the Aviation Transportation Committee for the city, particularly since he used my name and invited me to have a conversation with him, but that conversation has not happened, despite my attempts at both email and personal contact. And I'd sent a email to the Chairperson of the current budget situation, and he's promised me information that didn't arrive this morning by the time I left the house. So I'm unclear that our rand numbers are complete, and I'm hopeful to receive something similar to what the airport put out, which is the names of the people who got the money. And I think I'll call that a wrap. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Move for approval on Resolution substituted R. 25611, seconded by Councilmember King. Members, please vote your machines. Seven yays, no nays. That passes unanimously as well.
We'll now go to Ordinance Calendar Number 35,318 by Councilmember Jeruso, authorizing the continuance and renew of the designation of the local sales and use taxes to be used in determining the sales tax increment for the New Orleans City Park Taxing District for an additional six years to be used for economic development purposes, including the acquisition of equipment to authorize purposes. To increase the maximum amount the district may receive to $700,000 per year, to authorize such increments could continue to be collected and deposited in a special trust fund held by the New Orleans City Park Taxing District for economic development, infrastructure, and equipment acquisition purposes and otherwise to provide with respect thereto.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Members, I ask for this to be put on this agenda because I see it as being related to the overall revenue and expenditures of the city. As we all know, City Park is a state entity, but obviously, a closely held city asset for which we're greatly appreciative. This renews the TIF that they already have, and candidly, if they can generate their own money internally that doesn't hit the city coffers, I, I couldn't endorse it anymore, particularly in light of all the wonderful work that Rebecca Deeds, her staff, and the boards are doing at the park right now. I, I think there's been public comment on this. I know the TIF Board at City Park, which included Councilmember Morell, already voted in support of this. So with that, I would ask for your approval. I've moved, seconded by Councilmember Green. Seven yays, no nays. That matter also passes unanimously. Thank you.
We now go back to Page 2. Ordinance Calendar Number 35,305 has been deferred to December 17th. Ordinance Calendar Number 35,306 has been deferred to December 17th. But there's nothing else.
That's it. Mr. Morgan has put in a card. Is it on what matter? It's on what? Miss, Mr. Morgan, is this on something? We've already finished all of our voting items. I can't hear. Why don't you just come give your public comment, and then we'll, we'll move forward with the meeting. So go ahead, come on, sir. No, no, come on, just make your public comment. We'll do it so we can make sure you're heard. Thank you.
Marty, to the City Council, the people have asked me to come down here today to address some subjects, and some of the subjects that the top of their priority, the city budget money, they feel that they don't see too much percentage of them are spent in their neighborhood to where their neighborhoods is trashing and all that, and need some help of upgrading it. Also, that they feel this way, that the City Council member that has been re-elected in this administration, that their salary should be cut, and they should take a cut, because the reason is they don't see no production in their neighborhood that benefit them from their taxes. They request that their salary should be cut, too. And also that they request that when the people in City Hall, the employees, are eliminated and cut, that none of your friends that's on this council, that you will protect their position, be fair, and go across the border and cut them, too, the one that you have friends of. And the city, all, and the people know to also request that Moreno, they asked me to, you never forget that they put you in office, too. And don't turn your back upon them because you will hear from me and them, too. You owe my people, and my people demand that you take care of them, just like you going to take care of your Spanish people, too. I know that that is your first obligation, but remember, we put you in office.
Mr. Morgan, that's getting ridiculous. I mean, come on, man. Come on, come on. Jesus, man.
That ain't ridiculous. That is...
This is ridiculous. Mr. Morgan, Mr. Morgan, Mr. Morgan. Sit down. Stop. Mr. It's ridiculous. Sit down. It's absurd. All right. Motion, motion, motion to adjourn. Second. Goodbye. Goodbye.